Is open time for the general public, is there anyone here from the general public who wishes to be heard? Seeing none, we'll move on to item C, recognitions by the superintendent of the John and Abigail Adams Scholarship recipients for the class of 2025.
Mr. Chairman. Shannon Ward Layton is present, she has just arrived.
Thank you very much, Madam Clerk.
So, as you know, each year, we like to celebrate our Abigail Adams Scholars. And this year, we have more than ever, we actually had forty-seven from the high school, and we had six students from Gardner Academy, which is the largest number that Gardner's ever had. So, I'm really excited about these results. With MCAS not being a mandate, it's gonna be interesting what it'll be for the future, but again, you could save thousands of dollars in scholarships for college, so I'm really excited about this. Tonight's a tough night, cold weather, and these wonderful souls braved the weather to come out here. And we also have a big basketball game tonight, too, I think the girls are doing pretty well in their basketball game. And I think one of our students just scored her thousandth point, so, which is very exciting. But considering that there's basically, check my math, I think that's fifty-six, fifty-three then, if I have forty-seven and six, right? So, forty, so that's fifty-three names. What I'll do is I will be submitting them to Ms. Hillman for the record, but I would like to call out the students who are here tonight. And afterwards, if you wouldn't mind, just stand around real quickly, we'll get your picture taken, so we can get that on the website and send it to the Gardeners. Okay? So, without further ado, I'd like to identify the students who've actually earned the Abigail Adams Scholarship, which means they're in the top twenty-five percent across the state for their MCAS results. Huge, huge, wonderful performance, and again, the number of students we had this year was just phenomenal. So, without further ado. Actually, why don't you read?
Did you? Oh, I didn't, but I'll be okay. And Seija Ponte. And now, Coista Rodriguez. Robert Richard. Ryan Sanders.
Yeah, would you guys all mind just kind of come right out here for a picture?
The committee will stand at recess, and we'll get right after that.
Can you, we're gonna be all just kids, and then with all of them.
The committee will come back to order at 6:37 PM. If there is no objection, we're gonna take item number three, six, six-one, School Improvement Plans for Gardner High School and Gardner Academy, out of order, because we have guest presenters here with us this evening. Ms. Bulger, would you like to start?
Thank you, good evening, everyone. Somebody give a quick, a quick update of where we're at with our school improvement plan, and some of the things that we've been doing at the high school. You know, one of our goals was to bolster our tiered interventions, which is something we've been working on for several years now, both academic, not both, but academic, behavioral, and social-emotional. So, we've been working a lot on the academic piece in our common planning time, and with our four core departments, which has been going very well. The behavioral data is something I'm super excited about, I just got some fresh data before I came. A few years back, when we were kind of just starting to roll out our MTSS processes, and really looking at tier-one interventions, we started with behavioral interventions, and what that looked like in the classroom, and supporting teachers to deal with some of the behaviors in the classrooms. So, we took, probably four or five years ago, we like halved our discipline referrals, which was a huge win for us, and it's kind of stayed that way for years. But it's decreased significantly even more in this last year or two. We were just, I just did a quick look at the beginning of the year through the end of December referrals, even from this year to last year, last year's referrals were way down. We went from last year having four hundred and eighty-six discipline referrals, which could be for a whole variety of things, but whatever the discipline referral was, and this year only having two hundred and forty-six, so that's almost cutting it in half again. And again, this is due to a lot of the hard work that's happening right in the classrooms with the teachers, you know, with the support of administration. So, we're super excited about that. And something that we do is reviewing classroom expectations, we do that in one hundred percent of our classrooms on a regular basis. Nora's nodding her head, yes, I like that, all the time about what's expected in this classroom, what's expected in the cafeteria, as far as behaviors. So, we are doing that very regularly, we revisit it, always coming back from a break after a long weekend, when a semester changes, so we're constantly reviewing that data. Our tiered interventions are going very well, tier-one, we've been making a lot of progress. Tier-three, so our highest, highest, the students who need the highest intervention, so our most needy, may say two to three percent of our population, I think we've been doing an excellent job with as far as individualized plans, and really drilling down to the needs of those students, and we've seen progress with those students. Tier-two has been, we're starting a lot more groups and doing a lot more work with that, we have Homework Club going now, we have Check and Connect going. Probably the area we still have the most work to do, just because it's a, there's a, there's a lot of students that need that, meet the criteria for that, but we're making some great progress with that, too. So, those tiered interventions have been a huge focus of ours, and and that's been going really well. As far as, you know, working towards the elimination of disparities in our subgroup data, from attendance and discipline in particular, again, making a lot of progress with that, not too long ago, our, our discipline data was not particularly equitable, we were, we, our percentages with our special education population and some of our subgroup, other subgroups, you know, was higher than the general population. And although those aren't completely eliminated, the gap has significantly been closed for those, and that's something we keep our eye on all the time. And, you know, I put it in my monthly, you know, reports to school committee, so it's something we're looking at all the time. Attendance, again, we've been making significant progress with our attendance. And also looking at the subgroups, we're still a little bit higher for our special ed subgroup, but we, it's closing, which we're excited about, so we're continuing to do that. Our overall attendance data is near, you know, the state threshold is they shoot for that ninety-five percent across the board, and we are we're close, I think what I looked at for the year was like ninety-four points, so we're making a lot of progress with that. Progress with MCAS, we have been, we've had some nice growth results the last couple of years, which is, we've been very happy with. Our achievement scores, we're always looking to increase, but what we preach all the time is you can't, the achievement scores can't get better until we start without good growth data. So, you know, even though we might see, although we've had some growth with our achievement scores as well, but at, you know, what we want to keep seeing is the improvement from year to year with the students, and we've been seeing that, so we are pleased about that. Again, where we still need to make some progress is our special education students closing that gap with the achievement scores, which, you know, last year in particular with science, we closed the gap by ten points, which we were happy about that. Something I'm super excited about all the time is our college and career planning for our students. I was saying this to the superintendent, that when I wrote my last school improvement plan, you know, I put out that I wanted fifty percent of our juniors and seniors to have participated in either early college or some of our vocational technical programming. Sometimes when you set those goals, like at the time, I thought, well, are we ever gonna get there? But I was looking through the data and doing some calculating, and when you consider our early college program, which has a hundred junior, juniors and seniors enrolled this year, which we're super excited about, we have our new MVP program through Monty Tech, which has, we have got ten students in conferantry and ten students in electrical, they're adding plumbing next year, which we're excited about. Our auto tech program through Mount Wachusett, which we have eleven students enrolled in, in our own in-house manufacturing program. For the juniors, as far as overall numbers, we have forty percent of our juniors are either in one of those vocational technical programs or in early college, and our seniors are at fifty-one percent. And these programs aren't for everybody, some kids want the traditional high school experience, and that's great, we still got that, too. So, those are numbers we're just super, super excited about, early college growing, and our vocational programming that we're able to offer kids is growing, 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 and that doesn't even include the great stuff we have going on in our building with our woodworking program, our tech and engineering programs, so that's something that's, I'm very excited about. And again, our, one of the things is with the reduction in dropout rates, our dropout rates are consistently very, very low. I think our last year was one percent, one point seven percent for special ed, so that's always a number that we're looking at, that we need to decrease, but we've got some great dropout data. You know, which speaks to, we've made a lot of progress with our overall accountability data with the state, that we've been really pleased with. We had several years where we were kind of down in the twentieth percentile, and the last three years, we've been over forty percent, and at forty-seven percent this past year, which we're super excited about. And one last thing with our community outreach and monitoring that, and parent involvement and feedback from families, we've consistently, our surveys have consistently been coming back positive and with improvements. On a one-to-four scale, one being lowest, four being highest, in twenty-two, we're at three point oh-nine for an average score, considering all the questions. Twenty-three, three point two-three, and this past year, three point two-six, so, you know, we're pleased about that, and the feedback that we're getting from parents and guardians, and the student feedback, teacher feedback, so we're excited about that. So, that was kind of me reviewing what I had established for outcomes in the next three years, we'll keep plugging away.
Any questions, comments, concerns for Ms. Bulger, Mrs. Hurst?
I just wanted to say you have so many things to be proud of, and in my work, are you all over the state, so the disparity with the special needs students, it's everywhere, it's, and you've done a phenomenal job, our district has done a phenomenal job to bring that, you know, to a more equal number, but, and as a parent of adult children now, you know, there are things in place for special education students that I have advocated for, for all those years, that I see it coming to fruition, I see those gaps closing, I see the things that are put in place to support these kids, and, you know, anybody who has a kid going through public school right now, you know, they have a lot to be thankful for.
Thank you, a lot of hard work from a lot of people, a lot of people, so.
Yes, it is.
Mrs. Hurst, do you have something to say?
Well, you mentioned dropouts, I'm curious as to, so, some reasons as to why kids are dropped out of school.
Oh, boy. That sounds like such a simple question. There's a whole host of reasons, and I, you know, we work super hard with kids that are, you know, struggling, often it's things outside of school, you know, which we still support those students. You know, we try everything we can think of to keep them in school, so, you know, it's, it's it's such a hard question to answer, but every kid's different, but I think it's, it's, it could be family stuff, it could be just students who are disengaged, kids that have severe mental health issues, you know, sometimes there are just kids that are, have been disengaged with school despite everybody's efforts to try to get them to reengage. Yeah, it's.
They just want to, don't want to pitch in.
Yeah, I mean, these kids have a lot, some of these kids have a lot of obstacles to overcome, and you know, it's, it's it can feel like a pretty monumental task to some of these kids, and if they don't have a good support network around them, then, you know, they can throw the towel in and, despite our best efforts, unfortunately, there's some that don't make it through, but our numbers are really, really small, and we're excited about that. You know, and I also recognize part of that is we have an alternative school that is able to corral a lot of those kids, too, and then some of their creative programming, and, you know.
Some that leave, some of them come back, very few come back, but they do come back.
As far as totally leaving and coming back? Occasionally, occasionally, we'll get some kids to come back, but, you know, that doesn't always happen.
Thank you.
Any other questions, comments, concerns for Ms. Bulger?
Thank you.
Now, making her inaugural debut before the school committee as a principal here in Gardner Public Schools is Dr. Imperato from Gardner Academy.
Such a great introduction. So, I don't have as much data, and I'm sure you can tell from the previous school committee reports, that we're really working on getting accurate data. That is one of the things that we're doing this year, is getting structures in place and processes in place to get accurate data, so that is definitely something that is important to us, and we are moving in the direction of becoming a restorative school. And what that means is, as, you know, we just talked about dropout, is there's different reasons why school does not work for a lot of those students that come into our building. And a restorative approach is that we're building those relationships and that sense of community, so students want to come to school every day. And they want to come to school every day because they know at least one adult in that building is happy to see them, and that makes a huge difference. And we have noticed from the numbers this year with the attendance is that we have a lot of our students in school every day. Not quite at the state, the state level, but we have some grades are up in the nineties with attendance on average, some grades are a little under the seventies with that, but on average, we're in the upper eighties to getting students to school every day, which is phenomenal for an alternative setting. Our challenge is getting them to class. So, that is more of what our interventions are focusing on, we're so glad you're here, we're happy you're walking the halls, because you walked to the classroom, and really focusing on that. So, some of what we do in our restorative approach is we've moved to semesters, we were in trimesters, we moved to semesters, and also what we did with that is that we made it that you're earning credits at the end of each semester. So, instead of waiting until the end of the year to get those five credits, you're getting two and a half semester one, and then two and a half semester two. What that does is, because our students, a lot of them don't have those good student habits, they're not always motivated, is you mess up first term or second term, you only have to make up a semester for that credit recovery. We have students that come in and repeating a grade for the second and third time, if we say to them, you have to make up another year, they're done, they're gonna be that next dropout number. So, what we're hoping is by going to that semester system, it makes it more doable, it makes it feel like, oh, we can do this. And as part of that, we also have buyback for academics and for attendance, for class attendance. So, again, twice a week, with intervention blocks, and students can buy back the time if they've missed too many classes, they can bring up their grades to a level where they're at credit recovery, and those kinds of things. And we're working on now, what does that credit recovery look like for those students? So, again, they're here making mistakes, well, it hasn't always been good for them, how do we keep them engaged, and how do we keep them motivated? And those are some of the things that we're trying with the academics. We're also looking at going to more of a standards-based curriculum model, where there are certain standards we're gonna cover in a class, and we want all students to show mastery with that, but what that also does, it gives us a way to assess where students are, because we also get districts that move in from other towns into Gardner, and the end of a Gardner Academy, you have no idea what their educational background is, we don't know what they took, they may have failed the class also, for example, but actually took in a lot of the information. So, we can find a way to assess where they are, when we're doing those credit recovery classes, we can focus on what the students need, and they can keep moving at a faster pace. Again, we don't want them to come to us and think, I have five more years of high school, wait a minute, what do you mean, it's usually four, for example, but again, to make it more accessible for them. We're also very proud of the MVP program, and a part of that, too, is when students come to us as they're ninth or tenth grade, is when they're coming in the doors thinking about not just that college and career planning after high school, but really, what do you want to get out of high school? Is your goal to go to the MVP program? Is your goal to go back to Gardner High School? Is your goal to do some early college? Whatever that is, that we're already starting a plan early on, what that's gonna look like while you're at Gardner Academy, but also what happens beyond that. So, there's something that we're working on as a goal, that we're growing with that in terms of the academics. In terms of the SCL and behavior, again, we're a restorative school, we're also trauma-informed, so we've worked very hard to establish classroom routines across all of our content area classes, and it may sound simple, but it's not. But also getting the students to know, when I go into class, this is what it looks like, this is what I can expect. So, for all of our students, we'll pull class check-in, check-out system, for example. Where are our students feeling today, what is their goal for the classroom? And then individually, our teachers meet with those students, and we're lucky enough to have those small class sizes to check in, and again, continue those relationships, but also if a student is not feeling great, what do you need right now, how can we help you, so then you are available for your learning? So, that's been a huge piece of our SCL push this year. Another large piece of that is we have learning communities, which, think about advisory groups, we call them learning communities. Each content teacher, all four of them have about ten students, that is our advisor, that is our learning community. Every week on Mondays, we have community-building circles, you do that within your learning community, Tuesday is more the traditional advisor, and the SCL curriculum that we have is second step. Like I said, Wednesday and Friday are interventions, and then Thursday are more community-building activities. But what's nice, again, as I started with, that small group is your smaller community within our smaller school to begin with. You have that adult right away that you know that you can go to, and you have peers that hopefully you're building relationships with along the way, which has been really great. The other nice thing that we have is it gives us ready-made ways to have contests. So, we're talking about our four-school-wide expectations, beginning of the year, we had contests for being here, for being ready, being engaged, and being honest. And that was an easy way to do the contests, and have the students earn the points, and get the prizes, and motivate them. So, that was a really successful way that we've used those. We also are using the restorative model, since we have those community circles, is we're also growing more restorative practices, we're not doing that, you know, discipline that tends to be inequitable, is we're doing harm circles, we're doing conflict circles, we're doing those restorative conversations in the moment with staff and students, so it's not always send it to the office, it's not always calling home, it's like, we are here together, harm happened in our community, let's fix it and make it right. So, really helping these students own their learning, own their relationships, and own their behavior by taking that accountability, but also to make it better. So, we're doing that for them, with the buybacks, we're also getting those skills, because those are life skills, to own what you're doing and to own who you are as a person. The other piece that we're really trying to grow and look at is our family community involvement. This year already, when we had our welcome back with the ice cream truck, we had more families that came even to the back-to-school night. So, both of our events, the welcome and the back-to-school night, we had more families coming. Still wanted more than we had come, we did have more families come, and they were engaged, and that was really great to see. The other thing that we're working on is having more events like that, so we're actually having an awards night for first semester coming up in a few weeks, we're getting an awards night at the end of the year, that is all kinds of awards, not just academic, but noticing those kids that are always helping out somebody, or always being that good citizen for that as well. So, we're always looking for ways to increase our family participation. We also don't really have an active parent organization at all, so that is another goal of ours this year, is really to think about, how do we get more parents involved from a PTO perspective, but also from a school council perspective, to make sure we're getting their voices in all the decisions that we make. The other nice piece, like I said, we have those learning communities, is that every two weeks, the teacher that is that learning communities teacher is reaching out to families. An update, how is your student doing in class, how is your student's attendance, how are they doing making friends and socially, do we have any concerns? What are we celebrating? And that's also happening, so again, hoping that families are becoming engaged, because they know what's going on, and they're not always seeing that phone number coming up, like, oh, what did they do today? It's the positives, we also, as an admin team, are trying to make sure we're in touch with families, too, for the good stuff, so not just getting calls when something has gone wrong, and families seem to enjoy that, and a lot of them are responding to the teachers' emails, which is really encouraging. And then in terms of the community, one of the things that I really want us to see with our students is for them to realize there's a world outside of Gardner, especially for our students that don't feel like school is a good place for them. So, we're doing a lot of work to get different community groups to come into our school, and they're always thrilled to see our kids, and our kids are always thrilled to see them. MOC has been doing some health classes, and that's been going really well. We did something totally new this year, and we had the Department of Mental Health came in on Halloween, and they have a lot of peer mentors, peer council mentors, who have had mental health struggles themselves, and some of them have gone to alternative high schools. So, they came in and ran this event so students could get to know them, and started again, building those relationships and that trust, so they can keep coming and doing more activities to work on coping skills and different kinds of things, and there was an airbrush tattoo guy, it was not my influence, I swear, but he was very popular, they made slime, they made lava lamps, so they didn't realize some of what they were doing were actually coping skills, and that's what made it the best day ever, because they weren't put off by it, they were really engaged with it and learning from it, and they're gonna come in and do some more events, we're hoping to do something around cooking, because that was an interest of students, and maybe some more art. We also have just started a partnership with the Child and Family Wellness Center in Leominster, which has been phenomenal, because they're new enough, they can take our students as clients, but they also have been coming into our school, and they did a welcome activity before the break, and the students had a blast. They actually have a clinician come to our school, hopefully, and start seeing some students and running groups, and the great thing is, too, is that their staff, a lot of their staff are people of color, so our students see them. And the great thing is too, is that their staff, a lot of their staff are people of color, so our students see them. In them. So that, to see their faces light up like, what? I know, it's great! This has also been the best part of it, when they see that, you can hear them talking in Spanish with one of their clinicians and things like that. So that's been the best part too, is to see them see themselves and the people coming in. We have also had a good relationship with our probation officer. We're trying to not file CRAs as often, but really to work with students and their families in preventative ways and be creative so we're not going to the court all of the time and putting families through that process. And that's been mixed, somewhat successful. We've been trying that this year. And actually Cory is the one who introduced us to the Child and Family Wellness Center. So that was a great connection that we got there. That we have Bill and you also, the army recruiter come in before break. That was also phenomenal. So just again, getting more people from the community in our building to show our students that people do care about them and like them, but also that there are opportunities outside of Gardner. So that's also been pretty exciting for us as well. And in terms of some of the areas of growth, very similar to what Paul was saying for the high school, is really, like I said, looking at that career and college planning piece of it to really build that up while they're with us, but also after they're with us. Again, increasing that family engagement and just really working on our tiered intervention system. We have a good solid foundation of tier one, but really building up those other tiers. So we're pretty proud of what we've done with tier one, but to continue to have that growth and really think about how we can help our students and families more.
Any questions, comments, concerns for Dr. Imperato?
Thank you very much.
This is really impressive.
Oh, thank you.
This is really impressive, the way that you're weaving. I mean, social-emotional learning can be woven into anything. It's just like, it's ingrained, it's human learning. And the way that the relationship building and the sense of belonging, the way you're describing how you're fostering it, I mean, it's exciting to hear what the plans are and the ideas. So just thank you for engaging in this work because you know, and we all know, it's just important to help make these kids understand that they do belong and that they can see themselves successful. And it may look different than it does to kids in traditional public schools. So just thank you for your energy and welcome to the position.
Thank you.
Any other questions, comments, concerns? Thank you very much, Dr. Imperato. For both of you, thank you very much for what you're doing. I really appreciate that a lot. And Mrs. Bulger, happy birthday?
Oh. No place I'd rather be on my birthday.
You can thank someone in my office for letting me know. There are two more items we're going to take out of order just to be respectful of the people who are here presenting. We're going to go to item 3659, support for the appropriation for the Massachusetts School Building Authority Gardner Middle School feasibility study for a new roof project. Actually, oh, Director Hock. Do you want to let us know the process on this?
We submitted to the MSBA, we were accepted into their accelerated repair program. This is the first step. After the acceptance, we have to go through the motions. The city council has to vote on the appropriation before we even know how much we're appropriated. Seems odd, but they give us guidance to come up with a number. So this is sort of what I hope is a not-to-exceed number and hope it'll come in much lower. But generally, the city council looks to the school committee for general support of the project. So that's what this vote was for, general support, so that when it goes to the city council, hopefully at their next meeting, they'll know that the school committee is fully behind a new roof at Gardner Middle School.
Thank you, Director Hock. This is something we've done before with the new school, with the new roof windows, other MSBA projects that we've had. And it is odd that we have the appropriation before we know how much we need in the appropriation, but that's just the process that's legally outlined by the MSBA statute. Is there a motion on the floor, Attorney Palavin?
A motion to approve the support?
Second.
Motion made by Attorney Palavin, seconded by Mr. Schwartz to recommend favorable on the appropriation that will be coming before the city council at a future date. Is there any further discussion on that motion?
All time, we got it done. For that part.
Yes.
We're not accepted.
Any further discussion on the motion? Are you none? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay. Motion carries. And last one out of order before we go back to the top, item 3662, the college and career readiness coordinator presentation, Director Payne.
Hi, how are everyone? So you've already heard a little bit about the college and career stuff from the high school of four in Gardner Academy. So I just wanted to kind of be here as well to give some semester one updates. Since semester one closed, in regards to updated retention rates, where we're at for recruitment, and then just some of more of the behind-the-scenes movement that we've had from the state and the designation process, you know, as much as we know, and then we try to relay that to you guys. So, you know, the demographics hasn't also changed much since the beginning of the year once the cohorts accepted. That's kind of who we have for the year. So we're currently at 98 students for the year. We had a really successful semester one with these students. We were, like, I actually have not got official transcripts yet, but I've been able to go through the computers and read them. Right now, we're at a 95 retention rate for semester one. So we were really happy with that. This was the largest cohort we had go into early college academy. Obviously, we have larger cohorts, and we're taking in more students, and we're trying to make sure that all students have access. We have to provide a higher level of support and planning for those students and to keep our retention rate at 95 percent where it has been throughout the program. We were really happy that we were able to continue to deliver that same kind of service to those students. One of the other kind of improvements that we saw within the retention rate, last year, the students who did not retain the program were across the board, students who were historically underrepresented and specifically are students on IEPs. That was a very high dropout rate from the program who matriculated back into the high school from. This year, all students who received any IEP or FAB4 support services actually did retain. We did not have any students from any underrepresented populations in any of the 5 percent that is coming out of the program. So we were able to really make sure that that group was more heavily supported based off of last year's data. So we were pleasantly surprised at that. Again, we're still going through official transcripts, but as of now, it looks like we over, yeah, a lot of success. Out of the, you know, 95 percent who did retain, we also saw a huge improvement just of overall academic performance. This is something that I think is a result of us really working on our scope and sequencing of the courses that we offer, being more strategic about the math courses. We've done some work with Dr. Vogan and with Dr. Pollard over at Malatchusett to try to kind of align some of the courses and then really work on what should they be coming out of at the high school before they're going into college math. And I think we really saw the impacts of that this year. Last year at this time, we had 26 students on probation, so that's somewhere between a 2 and a 2.5 college GPA. This year, within our 95 who retained in group, we only have nine students within that GPA range. Everybody else is over the 2.5 GPA at a college-level GPA. So we really saw a lot of success in their performance. And I think that's a really kind of contributes to the alignment we've done and the work we've done with our high school teachers to get them academically prepared for this. So, you know, that is all kind of very exciting updates that we shared in the report. In regards to our MVP program, they both had touched upon. We did get the green light for plumbing. We have a little bit of a holdup on the state side, so it'll be behind schedule, but it, you know, it'll be open for next, yeah, we should be able to recruit for next year. So we'll be going from electrical and carpentry. We will be officially adding in plumbing, and then that'll give us an additional 10 seats in the program. So we have 30 students over in the program total, 15 juniors, 15 seniors for next year. So we were happy about that. That program has had a lot of success. Those students are loving it over there. It's really fun to go over there and watch them. Their attendance and their grades over there are phenomenal. And our students who are still struggling with attendance and grades on those academic weeks, they are not struggling over there. Like, on their shop weeks, they are there, they are working hard, they are performing well. So it's just real fun to see that program, you know, off the ground and running. Some of the behind-the-scenes things that are, you know, going on with early college designation that I wanted to share, we have had the opportunity this year to contribute to two state-level working groups, research pilots, you know, they kind of throw different names on them because of the work that we have done within this and the growth that we have seen within our community and the, you know, the positive outcomes we've seen within our community. So we got invited to participate with the Commissioner of the Department of Higher Education in partnership with DESI in regards to kind of researching and rolling out some pilot initiatives to address our class fill rates within Gardner, but also within Massachusetts, which is historic, you know, has been over the past few years about 50 to 60 percent across the state, which is very low. You only have 60 percent of your students filing pass. That's not good. So part of our early college data has really shown that our early college students are going at a much higher rate and they're persisting at a much higher rate. So we were invited to participate in this. And as a result of that, we actually get to launch some new pilot software and work with the Department of Higher Education that will be designed for us in one of the schools participating. So our students will have access to some, supposedly, some advanced technology and some more guided assistance and financially access and support. So we're really excited about that. So, I mean, that's a great benefit for our students to be able to have a triad, something that nobody else in the state has a triad, which should increase the financial awareness and financial capacity that they have and making college more affordable and accessible. Hopefully, this pilot runs well. Hopefully, it's impactful for our students. And then the state would ideally pick this up and roll it out to other communities. So we're in the middle of that process, working with those two organizations. And then we're also invited to sit in and work with the Department of Education actually rewriting the early college designation criteria. So we've been working this year to sit in with DESI on a consulting group and contribute to the feedback of the rubrics, the designation, expectations, what should the program look like, different models for this, researching different models. And a lot of that is because of the success that we've sustained within our programs and the student outcomes of that. So it's been really nice, you know, for us to have our programs be recognized and then to be also contributing to moving these initiatives forward in the state based off of the work we've done. So these are some of the behind-the-scenes updates. Any questions that I've not covered either for the report or?
So you've become part of a study group within the Department of Education at higher learning in the state. I guess it's safe to assume that not all districts in the community in the Commonwealth have college programs like we do.
That is correct. So that's actually one of the big questions that we have been tackling. So right now, there is the enrollment across the state is, you know, give or take about 7,000 students, depending on how you define an early college program. DESI just put out there for their five-year plan that they'd like to see at 25,000 in the next five years. I mean, that is obviously substantial growth and requires all sorts of staffing issues. There's again, you know, designation, how we get schools designated. So that's one of the things that we are assisting and kind of looking at and having these conversations around, like, how do we even scale it to that level and how do you make it accessible to all the schools, not only?
Because when I went to high school, we were lucky we were able to graduate.
Yeah.
No, I never thought about going to college and high school at the same time.
Yeah, and the data has continued. And DESI is really doing a little bit of a better job with tracking some postgraduate data. They have a somewhat new postgraduate resource, so we're just getting access to that. So that will be helpful. We'll actually really start to be able to see where our students are matriculating into and if they're persisting. Our data from last year, we had about 93 percent of our early college students matriculated to college. So we know that they at least deposited and accepted and went in the fall. We don't have the data whether they retain through first semester or forward. The piece that we got recognized for the state, which was one of the things that got us invited, was that of that group, 100 percent of our low-income students who participated in some post-secondary early college plan, automotive plan, 100 percent of those students did enroll in a higher education institute. And that was the data point that started out, you know, the process.
To share with you, I didn't complete college till 27 years at the high school.
It takes a long time for some people. The goal is to make it more accessible.
The choices were real. I was married, I had children.
Yeah.
And if I didn't go to get a college degree, it was my job. So that was certain motivation.
And sometimes it just depends on where you're at in your life. But we can get students put in the door and get them experience and make it quicker and easier and less of a financial burden. We see more success in them completing it, so, yeah.
Any other questions, comments, concerns for Director Payne? Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for giving the call.
We're going back to the beginning of the agenda again. So now we will be in order for the rest of the meeting. Item D is listed as introduction of school committee members. That's because we copied and pasted from the last organizational meeting that we had last year after we had an election. We do not have any new school committee members we need to introduce tonight, so we're going to skip over that. To item E, reorganization of the school committee officers. Pursuant to section 38 of the charter of the City of Gardner, the school committee is hereby meeting on Tuesday, on Tuesday, on the, on the Tuesday, excuse me, following the first Monday in January for the purpose of our annual reorganization meeting to elect the officers of the school committee. Pursuant to section 37 of the charter of the City of Gardner, the mayor serving as the chair of the committee shall preside over the organizational process. The process for the election of officers of the committee shall be as follows. Nominations will be opened by the chair. Any member may nominate another member or themselves for the position for which nominations have been opened. Nominations do not need to be seconded by another member, but other members may choose to do so as a sign of support for the nomination. The chair shall ask if there are any other nominations from the floor for a total of three times, after which the chair shall call for a motion to close nominations for that position. Following a successful vote to close nominations, the chair shall ask the clerk to call the roll of members voting. When called, members shall state the name of the person that they are voting for in that position. The election of officers shall proceed in the order in which they are listed on the agenda for this evening's meeting. At this time, I'll hereby open nominations for the position of vice chair.
I nominate Rachel Cormier to be vice chair. I second that.
There's a nomination by Attorney Palavin, seconded by Ms. Ward-Layton for the position of vice chair. Are there any other nominations from the floor? Are there any other nominations from the floor? Third and final, are there any other nominations from the floor? Is there a motion to close nominations for the position of vice chair?
Show move.
Motion made by Mr. Schwartz, seconded by Mr. LaFreniere to close nominations for the position of vice chair. Is there any discussion on the motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay. At this time, the clerk will please call the roll for those voting for vice chair. When called, please state the name of the candidate who you wish to vote for. And Ms. Hillman, I'll be voting on all of these.
I'll be sure I got the right page here. Yes, this is a roll call, voting for Rachel Cormier for vice chair. She was the only nomination for that position, and the motion was made and seconded. So I will have to call, I have to call them in alphabetical order. So the first person is Rachel Cormier.
Vote for myself, Rachel Cormier.
Mr. Mrs. Hurst?
Rachel Cormier.
Mr. LaFreniere?
Rachel Cormier.
Mrs. Shannon Ward-Layton?
Rachel Cormier.
Mrs. Palavan?
Rachel Cormier.
Mr. Schwartz?
Rachel Cormier.
And Mayor Nicholson?
Rachel Cormier.
Okay, so that's two, four, six, seven votes for Mrs. Cormier.
Congratulations, Mrs. Cormier.
Thank you.
Nominations are hereby open for the position of finance officer. Is there a nomination from the floor?
I nominate John LaFreniere to be finance officer.
I'll second.
Ms. Still LaFreniere has been nominated by Attorney Palavin, seconded by Mr. Schwartz for the position of finance officer of the committee. Are there any other nominations from the floor?
I'm sorry, the nomination was for Mr. LaFreniere?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Did I say that right? Yes, yes. Second time, is there any other nominations from the floor? And third time, is there any other nominations from the floor? At this time, I'll entertain a motion to close nominations.
Move to close.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Schwartz, seconded by Mrs. Cormier to close nominations for the position of finance officer. Is there any discussion on the motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay. Motion carries. The clerk will please call the roll for finance officer.
This is a roll call vote for the position of finance officer. And you're voting for Mr. John LaFreniere as the only candidate, finance officer. Mrs. Cormier?
John LaFreniere.
Mrs. Hurst?
John LaFreniere.
Mr. LaFreniere?
John LaFreniere.
Mrs. Ward-Layton?
John LaFreniere.
Mrs. Palavan?
John LaFreniere.
Mr. Schwartz?
John LaFreniere.
And Mr. Nicholson, Mayor Nicholson.
John LaFreniere.
There's seven votes for Mr. LaFreniere.
Very much. Our nominations are now open for the position of alternate finance officers. There are two of these, so when your name is called for the vote, you'll say two names for that one. Are there nominations open on the floor?
I will nominate Bob Schwartz.
Are there any of the nominations?
I'll nominate Mr. Schwartz.
So nomination by Mr. Schwartz, by Ms. Palavin, seconded by Mr. LaFreniere.
I'm sorry. I was seconding it.
Yes.
I was seconding it. And then I'll nominate Jen Palavin.
Nomination by, for Ms. LaFreniere for Jen Palavin for one of the two positions, seconded by Mr. Schwartz. Are there any other nominations from the floor? Are there any other nominations from the floor? Third and final, are there any other nominations from the floor? Third and final, are there any other nominations from the floor? Seeing none, is there a motion to close nominations for the?
Move to close.
Is there a second? Second by Ms. Ward Layton, motion made by Mr. Schwartz. Uh, any discussion on that motion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. At this time, the clerk will call the roll for alternate finance officers in which the response would be two names.
Yes. Okay, this is the roll call vote for alternate finance officers and you are to vote for two. Mrs. Cormier.
Bob Schwartz and Jen Palavan.
And Mrs. Hurst.
Robert Schwartz and Jennifer Palavan.
Mr. LaFreniere.
Robert Schwartz and Jen Palavan.
Mrs. Ward Layton.
Rob Schwartz and Jen Palavan.
Mrs. Palavan.
I'm Robert Schwartz and Jen Palavan.
Mr. Schwartz.
Robert Schwartz and Jennifer Palavan.
And Mayor Nicholson.
Robert Schwartz and Jennifer Palavan.
That's seven in favor of, uh, I am in here.
Alternate finance.
Mrs. Palavan and Mr. Schwartz, your two finance officers, Mrs. Palavan and Mr. Schwartz.
Thank you very much. Uh, nominations are now open for the position of secretary. Is there a nomination from the floor?
I nominate Ann Hurst. I second.
Uh, motion made, nomination made for Ann Hurst for the position of secretary by Attorney Palavan, seconded by?
I'll second.
But Mrs. Cormier already seconded, but I got you Bob. Is there any of the nominations from the floor? Is there any of the nominations from the floor? Is there any of the nominations from the floor? Is there a motion to close nominations?
Close.
Motion made by Mr. LaFreniere, seconded by Mr. Schwartz. Got you that time, Bob. To close nominations for the position of secretary. Is there any discussion on the motion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. At this time, the clerk will call the roll for the position of secretary.
Yes, this is a roll call for the position of secretary and Mrs. Hurst has been nominated. Mrs. Cormier.
Ann Hurst.
Mrs. Hurst.
Ann Hurst.
Mrs. LaFreniere.
Ann Hurst.
Mrs., Mrs. Ward Layton.
Ann Hurst.
Mrs. Palavan.
Ann Hurst.
Mrs. Schwartz.
Ann Hurst.
And Mayor Nicholson.
Ann Hurst.
Seven in favor.
Mrs. Hurst is elected secretary. Congratulations to everyone on their new assigned positions for the 2025 calendar year. Moving on to item F, the consent agenda. This is included in your packet. We'll note that it includes $943,000 in grant funding, of which $18,000 is going to support multilingual newcomer students who are also facing homelessness and $925,000 of that is for continuing the work of leadership pipeline development in the north central Massachusetts region. Uh, there's also two donations included in this from the Rollstone Charitable Foundation slash Noah Gray Football Donation in the amount of $1,250 and from Yen Yen Chinese Cuisine in the amount of $2,500 as well. Uh, is there a motion to accept the consent agenda?
So move, second.
Motion made by Mr. LaFreniere, seconded by Mr. Schwartz to approve the consent agenda as presented. Is there any discussion on that motion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries. Item G, subcommittee reports, beginning with facilities. Subcommittee, Mr. Schwartz.
Subcommittee, uh, I didn't say when we met. I was in November. And, um, looking at the high school, we reviewed the maintenance facilities project list and what was noticed was the Landry Auditorium at the high school still not ready for use. The HVAC upgrades are about 80% complete and the theatrical upgrades hopefully will be completed sometime in January. So January's not over yet. The kitchen at the high school is scheduled for a dishwasher replacement and a compliance requirement for the exhaust hood that goes over the burners in the kit, in the kitchen. They are scheduled for completion during a school break and it wasn't really identified what school break, so I don't know if it happened at this school break or it's going to happen in April or when we have a next one. At the middle school, scheduled for replacement of the exterior front doors and the walk-off grill is scheduled for a school break. Again, unknown what break. Dishwasher replacement is scheduled and the replacement of two hot water system pumps and a non-portable water heater is scheduled for a school break. Also you find attached, there are pictures of trees that are cut down, just piles of dirt or sawdust. Those trees were around the high schoo, uh, excuse me, around the middle school. They were pretty bad, so I'm very happy that they're finally down. Maybe we'll be able to replant something else in there soon. The, uh, at Elm Street School, the doors at the auditorium and the gym were scheduled for replacement, but what the maintenance department did was they rehung the doors and the door alarms were installed at a cost of $2,500. So we saved a great deal of money and it seemed to work just as well as what we wanted with the replacement of the new doors. There were several other projects that are scheduled on the project list, but we're waiting for specifications, waiting for funding and going out for bid. So there'll be future reports. That's all I have to report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Is there any questions, comments, concerns on that report? Moving on to the finance subcommittee, Ms. LaFreniere.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The finance committee met on December 4th. We started our meeting as usual, just reviewing the expense reports. The committee asked questions. There were simple questions answered, but the best thing was there were no new negative line items, which is always good. And we reviewed the revolving funds. All the funds are healthy and performing appropriately. We already, we reviewed the donations that we had just voted on in the consent agenda and the easements for the Safe Routes to School project on Elm Street were reviewed and discussed. A motion was made by Jen Palavan and seconded by Mr. Schwartz to donate the easements for the project and it was so voted. And that was all we did at that meeting.
Thank you very much. Any questions, comments, concerns? Mr. Chairman, moving on to the policy subcommittee, Mrs. Hurst.
Um, we can have Rachel do the November piece and then I'll do December just 'cause she was in charge that night. It's been a matter of time.
All right, so I have the report from the November 20th meeting of the policy subcommittee. We reviewed a number of policies that day. We have two that are marked, um, reviewed November 2024 with no changes. We have eight up for first read in addition to the ones that we reviewed in December and we have one for removal and that is JLC-A dash E and that we felt was a job description. It's the school physician policy, so it really wasn't needed for the policy manual. So the eight first reads will be in item 3658 later in the agenda.
Thank you. Mrs. Hurst.
Um, we met in December, on December 18th. Tonight we'll have, we have seven for first, uh, excuse me, five for first read and two for adoption. Um, you'll find them in your packets. That's really about it.
Questions, comments, concerns? We're moving on to our student advisory report. Ms. Morris.
Thank you. The fall athletic season ended off on a very positive note with several teams making it to playoffs. Our winter athletic season is now underway and we're very excited to support all those teams over the next few months. Parent-teacher conferences were held on November 25th and 26th. Many parents came to meet with teachers and see all the great things that GHS helps offer. On December 28th, the holiday concert was held in the GHS gym as is the band and chorus were amazing and played to large crowds. We're hoping this will be our last concert that needs to be in the gym as the auditorium renovations are in the final stages. On the half-day of school, on December 20th, we held a fun dodgeball tournament between students and staff. It was lots of fun and students prevailed. We also served, we also served hot cocoa on December 20th to all the students who have their Good Citizen Card as an award for their great work with passing all their classes, having good attendance and having no disciplinary referrals. The students in our early college program are enjoying, are enjoying their break, finished their first semester at the college. Students did a great job. The semest, the next semester starts in a couple of weeks. And lastly, our MVP program with Montech is going great and all those students will be in a new state of the art building that holds electrical and carpentry shops next year. We're hoping to add plumbing, a plumbing shop as well. Our students are doing very great in the program.
Thank you very much. Any questions, comments, concerns on Ms. Morris's report? Thank you very much. Uh, before we go to the next one, we'll take a brief two-minute recess just to get, or less than two-minute recess just to get clarification on something and then we'll reconvene after The committee will come back to order at 7:30, 2:00 PM. Item number 3658, first reading of policies. There's no action being taken on any of these items tonight. They're for information for consideration at our next school committee meeting. Uh, policy JLC, Student Health Services and Requirements. JLC-A, physical exams of students. JLC-B, immunization of students. JLC-C, communicable diseases. JLC-D, administering medication to students. JLC-E, food allergies. JRD, student photographs. KBBA, non-custodial parents' rights. KCDA, computer donation policy. KCDA, combined with KCD, public gifts to schools. KDB, public's right to know. KH-A, public solicitations in the schools. KHB, advertising in schools. JQ, student fees, fines and charges. And KDC, community use of digital resources. The policy subcommittee has recommended the acceptance of the above policies and these will be voted on at the next meeting. Policy JLC-A dash E, position description of school physician. This will be on next meeting's agenda for a vote to remove this policy. The following policy has been found by the Massachusetts Association of School Committees to be redundant.
We can vote on the removal tonight.
Okay, we're going to take JLC-A dash E tonight, but all the other policies that I read that the policy subcommittee really had me work for tonight will be voted on at the next meeting when I have to read all of them all over again. But policy JLC-A dash E, the position description of the school physician is up tonight for a vote to remove. The policy has been found by the Massachusetts Association of School Committees to be redundant or unnecessary and has been recommended to be considered for removal from our policy manual. Is there a motion on the floor? Ms. Ward Layton.
Motion to remove the policy.
Is there a second?
I second.
Mrs. Hurst, to remove the policy as written and presented. Is there any discussion on that motion? One less to read next month. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries. We've already done item number 3659. Moving on to item 3660, easement for the Safe Routes to School Grant Program at 160 Elm Street for Elm Street Schools Parcel. Uh, this is a city project that has come before the school committee. The way that the general laws of the Commonwealth are set up, uh, the school committee has jurisdiction over land in the city outside the scope of what the city council and the administration on their own have jurisdiction over. Therefore, the school committee is considered the landowner of this land or any land that's owned or operated by the schools unless voted on by the school committee to give that land back to the jurisdiction of the city council and the administration. Uh, we are in a, the proposal for the project reads as follows. The proposed project includes the resurfacing of Elm Street and the City of Gardner from Cross Street to Temple Street approximately 1,340 feet. The project involves the alteration of the roadway geometry, including the implementation of a road that's supposed to say divot and not diet. Uh, safety improvements and the formation of a pickoff-dropoff area for the Elm Street School Gardner Academy area and bicycle accommodations have been provided in accordance with the applicable design guidelines. Improvements also include the reconstruction of an ADA compliant pedestrian facilities including sidewalks, pedestrian curb ramps and rectangular rapid flashing beacons at the school's driveways for increased road crossing safety. Uh, what this vote is before us tonight is so the project can continue on its this spring slash summer timeline for the full reconstruction of that section of Elm Street in terms of new sidewalks and new road paving. Uh, the school committee has to vote to donate the land as an easement to the City of Gardner. That way, the city's administrative departments can move forward without taking land away from the school committee because of the way that general laws are set up. The city council will have to vote to accept this donation at their next meeting. Uh, we are paying for the easements that we have for private property in the city, but where this is a city department to a city department, that's why it's considered a donation. Is there a motion on the floor?
So move.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. LaFreniere, seconded by Mr. Schwartz to approve the easement as presented in the packet. Is there any discussion on this item? Uh, because this is a land vote, Ms. Hillman, this does have to be a roll call vote.
Oh, you want a roll call?
Yeah.
Okay, this is a roll call, uh, vote to approve item 3660 on the agenda, which is the, uh, uh, easement, uh, at 160 Elm Street for the Elm Street School to support that easement. Correct? Okay. Okay, Mrs. Cormier.
Yes.
Mrs. Hurst.
Yes.
Mr. LaFreniere.
Yes.
Mrs. Ward Layton.
Yes.
Mrs. Palavan.
Yes.
Mr. Schwartz.
Yes.
And Mayor Nicholson, would you like to vote on this one or no?
Uh, no, because I'll have to sign the final vote from the council, so just to coordinate. Uh, no, I have to sign the final vote from the council to accept.
Oh, okay, so no, okay. Okay, that's six in favor.
Thank you very much. The motion passes. The easement is granted. Item 3663, curriculum coordinator update. This was included in your packet for information. Is there any questions, comments, concerns? Thank you, Dr. Gog. Item 3664, grant administrators update. This was included in your packet for information. Is there any discussion, questions, comments, concerns? Thank you, Director Dunn. Item 3665, special education update. This was included in your packet for information. Is there any questions, comments, concerns on this item? Thank you, Ms. West. Item J, communications. Dr. Pellegrino.
Um, just a couple of things. You know, first, Happy New Year to everybody. Very excited to be back. I was excited to be here tonight, you know, for the Abigail Adams scholarships and our, having that number of scholars is excellent. Um, but I will also say it would have been nice to be Wes Boilston, seeing Tati Vasquez for her thousandth goal. That would have been nice. But congratulations to her. Uh, I do want to say, you know, you saw a phenomenal dynamo trio tonight. Ms. Payne, Dr. Imperato and Ms. Bolger are just three very, very strong leaders working very well together. They've really brought the name of Gardner to the state in a really good, positive way. Uh, we are being asked to be involved in a number of different ways and it has so much to do with leaders like them and we have, you know, other very strong principals as well. We're really pulling, um, teachers in and changing the culture of the schools. I'm just really proud of the work that they're doing. Uh, Dr. Imperato is doing a great job making sure that teachers have very consistent practices and expectations. Everything seems to be very consistent and we're all pulling in the same direction. So I'm just very excited and just to see their energy shows you how dedicated they are, not only to their schools and their kids, but just to Gardner in general in our community. and our community. So, I love having them as some of our leaders. I also want to mention that another great partner we have is Mount Watchus Community College. The early college program there right now, they were, they have this whole thing where it's free college. And so, they have a lot of people who are applying, and so capacity is very difficult. They've dedicated themselves to make sure that we have, we'll still have the capacity that we need for Gardner High School kids to continue our early college program and to continue growing it. So, I'm thrilled with the work that they're doing with us, and they're just, they've just been a wonderful, trusting partner. Our Leadership Pipeline Grant, about nine hundred and some forty-five thousand dollars or so that we have for that grant, is just unbelievable. That's gonna be another three years of continued professional development and coaching from the Lynch Leadership Academy for our leaders. Again, all pulling in the same direction. And just one last point, there is a wellness challenge going on. Becky McCaffrey, I don't know, I didn't notice it in the report, but organized with CrossFit six nine six, we're doing a challenge with, against Narragansett, a healthy challenge. There will be a video coming out of the two super attendants going head-to-head. So, we're really excited about that. But again, that's, that's all, that's part of the Wellness Committee, and it's not only for students, but it's also for our staff. And so, hopefully we'll have a lot of staff participating, and we're gonna trounce Narragansett. I'm sorry.
Thank you, Dr. Pellegrino. Any questions, comments, concerns? Go, Ken. Moving on to final comments of the school committee, Ms. Ward-Layton.
Um, actually, I wrote like notes, notes, because every week I feel, every meeting I feel the pressure being first. So, I'm actually gonna like really read through these now. So, just first of all, Happy New Year, of course, and congrats to everyone taking an officer's position. Thank you. I appreciate that you take those extra steps leadership, 'cause I learned a lot from it, being still in my freshman year and the committee, so just thank you. Again, just super impressed, especially with the Gardner Academy plan and Dr. Imperato's energy, so just wanna say that again, and just, I'm looking forward to seeing what they do. And so, this, this actually was a, we like fell into this conversation right when I walked in late, and I apologize for that, about MCAS being removed as a graduation requirement. And I know there's a lot of mixed feelings on this across the board, teachers, community members, parents, probably administrators, everyone in all walks. And I know that I'm coming at this from my own lens as an educator and as kind of working with the campaign and whatnot, but I think the, the message I settled on was have faith in our educators and in their ability and training to deliver really robust and rich content to these kids without MCAS being as big of a measuring stick for that graduation requirement. It's been such a norm for a long time. It's just change is difficult, I think. And, but just to have that, have that faith in the educators, because it's, again, it's a mixed bag of feelings, but we're also Massachusetts. We got a lot of great people here doing this work. Last but not least, please keep in mind that we are the not-so-maybe-bright mammals that fight biology this time of year. We should be hibernating. We should be eating and sleeping, and it is very cold and crazy tonight, and just, I don't know, just a quick wellness field to take care of yourselves. This is a rough month, mental health-wise, and I know that Ann has always made some really great statements about it. So, just can find the light, go, go sit in the sun when it's out, and just take care of yourselves. So.
Full spectrum light bulbs.
Full, yeah. I remember my mom having light bulbs in the nineties that she would sit in front of, because she was like, it works. And I was like, okay, I don't believe you. And thirty-eight years old, I believe it. I believe it now. So, and that is all. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Mrs. Hurst.
Um, Happy New Year, everybody. And the, the three presentations tonight were top-notch. They, we have some really amazing people in this district. And I would like to point out that as good as they are, it's because they have good leadership above them as well. So, other than that, I don't really have much more to say. Mental health is important, especially this time of year. I found myself, I was sick and in the hospital during Thanksgiving, and I found myself feeling pretty depressed. And what turned it around for me was looking at things through the eyes of my granddaughter. So, just take those moments to really sit back and, you know, appreciate the, the little moments that are so precious, 'cause I think we all get bogged down with way too much stuff and bombarded by the media and just work and everything in general. And, yeah, self-care. Thank you.
Attorney Flavon.
Um, Happy New Year to everyone, and I would like to send out a congratulations to all of the John and Abigail Adams recipients, and thank you to the presenters tonight. I echo what has already been said, that, you know, I think there's so much work going on in this district, and everything is moving in the right direction. And, oh, and congratulations to the new officers, especially Mrs. Carmier. It's, being vice chair can be a lot of work, but it's very rewarding, and I look forward to what you're gonna do in that position. Thank you.
Ms. Morris, do you have anything you want to say?
Um, Happy New Year, everybody. And also, I kind of walked in late, sorry, but I was here for the presentations, which I thought were amazing. Hearing from, I never really, I know about the alternative school, but I've never really got to see the principal and hearing presentation. I know she's gonna do amazing things. And seeing my own principal and Mrs. Payne, which I work closely with, is really nice to see, and I know, and I can attest to all the amazing things they're doing, so.
Thank you very much. Mr. Schwartz.
Congratulations to the officers, all officers re-elected, except for Rachel, new position. Happy New Year to everyone. This week is sort of a sad week, and Jimmy Carter, our thirty-ninth president, is, we're participating in his funeral. And I, I just hope that the younger kids in school have an opportunity to watch the ceremonies on television, because this is a historical event. And Jimmy Carter was, as we found now, found out that he's quite a guy. And also, further down the road, we're having our inauguration of our new forty-seventh president, so hope everybody participates by observing. If you have an opportunity to go to Washington, go for it. I'm not going, so. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Schwartz. Mr. LaFreniere.
Uh, just Happy New Year to everyone. Congratulations to Rachel. Look forward to working with you in that position. And the presentations were fantastic. Like everyone said, it was really good to see. That's it. Thank you.
Vice Chair Carmier.
I'm looking forward to a new year and new position. I thank you all for your support, and congratulations to the rest of you with your roles. I, one of my favorite parts of meetings in general is seeing the students here, so it was great to see them. I'm so proud that there's so many others who could have been here, even though, you know, there's just a very busy time of year with sports and other activities, but it's nice to know there are that many kids who are just achieving such great things. The administrators that presented tonight were amazing, and I think what struck me from all three of them is they're meeting students where they are. They're not expecting the students to fit into a box that they might not be, you know, willing or able to be in. And I think that's really incredible that they were giving these kids an opportunity to achieve things where maybe they don't feel like they can or deserve to, or wherever they're coming from, and giving them every opportunity. And I think that's wonderful, and I'm just so happy to be part of a district that can do that.
I have a couple of stuff to say, but just to start with a note, one of the things that I'm gonna be doing with the city council, at least from now through the end of the fiscal year, is just giving updates on accounts that we are going to be watching due to just, you know, the budget process beginning, seeing trends that we have seen. And I know one that's been coming up a lot lately is the health insurance account for the city and the rates that had to go up this year for our employees because we implemented a twenty percent rate increase this past year. The city is a self-insured organization, so we have our own health benefits trust fund that we oversee. The city pays seventy-five percent, the employee payroll deductions pay twenty-five percent of the insurance costs that are there, and the benefit breakdowns are actually on the city's website. You can see what each of those cost shares are. As we continue to move forward, one of the things that we're looking at is, because of that increase that went up, it wasn't just an increase in the employees' payroll deductions, but also an increase in the city's seventy-five percent share of those costs too. So, we are gonna financially be watching where we are there. We anticipate it'll need a free cash appropriation at the end of the year to help supplement the funds that we've already appropriated in the budget. We have money set aside for that right now. But to put this into a perspective picture, how the city gets billed by Blue Cross on a monthly basis is we pay what's called a level monthly deposit in advance, where it guesses what we're gonna be paying in claims on the month that we're going into, so that we can almost prepay those claims. And at the end of the month, we get what's called a deposit settlement payment invoice, in which if the claims came in higher, we send a supplemental check to cover those claims. If the claims came in lower, we get a credit on our next bill and so on from there. In fiscal year two thousand twenty-four as a whole, the city had to pay one point two million dollars over what our level monthly deposits paid in those claims that came in, because we're seeing a trend, just like every other community in Massachusetts and quite frankly across the country, is seeing in high claims coming in higher. As of December thirty-first, we have already paid one point three million dollars over what those level monthly deposits have been paid, because those high claims continue to go higher. So, we have already paid over our deposit number in the first six months of this fiscal year, what we paid in total last fiscal year over that amount. And that's based off of the actuarial studies that Blue Cross has and the contract that we have from to operate our health plan for us. So, as we continue to move forward, that's just something that we're going to be monitoring. I'll be sending regular updates to the city council on where we are in terms of where the budget's at, where the health trust fund is at, and things like that. But because that does affect employees in the school department side, I want to make sure the committee was at least aware of those items there. And what was the force behind those drivers? It's the high claims that are coming in. And we actually get a report now, bi-weekly, on the high claims that come in. And you can see that a lot of it's elective procedures that were put off three years ago, and now the doctors had the backlog as a result of when the COVID regulations lifted. Everyone came in, and that backlog is starting to have its release gigs, and people are starting to get in. And the, now, now it's our backlog, and almost in some ways, because a lot of our employees are undertaking those elective procedures that are there. So, hopefully, we'll see a shift come down once that trend ends, but at the same time, it's just something we need to monitor and be cognizant of, that this is something that's currently happening. So, I want to be transparent with the committee about that. As I've been writing the, this year's State of the City address, I asked Dr. Pellegrino to send me a report on just some stuff with the schools that might be interested in including. And I'm really proud to be from Gardner as a resident and not even just the mayor here, but just someone who lives here, and alum of Gardner Public Schools too. There's a lot of good things happening here in the school district, and we heard a lot of that tonight from our two principals that came and presented. And there's a lot for the community to be proud of. So, thank you very much for the work that you and your team do to our teachers, to our administrators, Dr. Gogan, Ms. West, everyone else who was here earlier today. The Rockwell Committee will be meeting the week of Valentine's Day to do our next round of grants. The applications close at the end of this month, so make sure, or Martin Luther King Week, I believe. The, the teachers know when the grant applications close, but it's towards the end of the month. Because of the way the fund has been performing, it looks like by statute, we can give out up to ninety percent of the income that's earned in a given year. We have a legal opinion now that defines what the income is. We'll be able to give out up to two hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars in grant funding this year, based off the applications that come in, based off of the way the committee votes. But that's the much we have available to us to give out if we choose to. So, I just wanna say thank you to everyone, 'cause their school committee has a seat on that committee. Dr. Pellegrino helps provide information to the committee on the, when the applications come in. It's, there's a lot of good that's come out of that account, and that was just someone thinking outside the box on that as a way to give back to our students in the classroom. So, it was great to see there. Other than that, congratulations to our new officers who are here, and also thank you to Ms. Plaven for the work you did in six years as vice chair. From the phone calls we had, especially when we weren't in our classroom buildings, I appreciate all of your help and the amount of work you did, because a lot of it was behind the scenes. So, thank you very much for everything you did. Other than that, Happy New Year, and we'll see you all soon. Is there, uh, there's no executive sessions this evening. Our next meeting, aside from the State of the City, will be on Monday, February tenth at six thirty PM here. And is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Motion made by Attorney Plaven, seconded by Ms. LaFreniere to adjourn. Is there any discussion on the motion? All in favor say aye, opposed nay, motion carries. Thank you all very much.